Call me to order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beady, here. Rosev.
Here.
Crouch.
Here.
Scarborough.
Here.
Mayor Lansford.
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda, however, both of the redevelopment agreements are technically ordinances rather than resolutions, but there's no change to the topics in your order.
Okay, thank you. We have no formal council recognition this evening, so we'll move to public comment. Anyone like to address the council, please step to the podium and state your name. Hearing none, then we'll move to item number one.
Mayor Council, item number one is a resolution that updates the city's sexual harassment policy. We have had what I think is a pretty robust sexual harassment policy in the past. This is not in reaction to any problems or issues in the city, but the state legislature mandated in the most recent general assembly that all units of local government have to adopt this new policy, and it doesn't exactly conform to the one that we already have. So if you approve this resolution, which is recommended, it will supplant the one that we already have, it's in our employee manual.
Thank you. Entertained a motion and second to authorize the supplementation and replacement of the city of Streeter's sexual harassment policy prohibiting sexual harassment in the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties in Illinois.
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item two.
Mayor, item two is the city's annual tax levy. The tax levy that is proposed is the one that you worked through in your study sessions, and it is about 1% less than last year's total tax levy ordinance. However, there's always a difference between what you actually include in the ordinance and what is actually extended because of variations in equalized assessed value and some other changes to the county base, and so it's pretty close to being zero change. So it really is as close as we can get, and that was what you tried to do in your study session, is to get it exactly as close as possible. Three of the levies you don't really control, they're dictated to you either by actuaries or by an autonomous entity. Those are the fire pension fund, the police pension fund, and the Streeter Public Library levy. The rest of them you deal with in the aggregate and adjust them as the statute allows so that their aggregate total gets to what you want, and what you wanted was that it stays close to zero as possible, and this ordinance achieves that. I should point out for the public record that there are two actuarial reports that come to different conclusions on the obligation of the fire pension fund. No two actuaries come to the same conclusion, sort of like attorney's opinions sometimes, and different variables can result in a different opinion, I'm not trying to jump on the attorneys, but, and there are certainly multiple variables in actuarial analysis. It is not uncommon for there to be different actuaries, and we've had that happen in the past, most recently on the police side. I have spoken with our employment law attorney as to what the city's appropriate action should be, since we do have two different levies, excuse me, we have only one levy, two different actuarial reports, and I don't have an answer yet for that. So it's my recommendation that we pass the levy, because you're required to do so and to file it before the end of the month, in fact sometime next week.
Yes, we file it next Tuesday.
And I will continue my dialogue with our employment specialist attorney. I believe there is a process for filing amendment to the levy later on. You have to have your base levy in, as Cheryl has said, so I will keep you up to date on that. But that is, you know, I've not dealt with the question of what do you do when you have competing actuaries before, so.
Thank you. An entertaining motion, second to adopt and approve the levy and assessments of taxes on real property for all purposes for defraying expenses for corporate purposes for the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties in Illinois for the fiscal year commencing on January the first, 2018, and ending on December 31st, 2018.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussions? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item three.
Like the tax levy, this amendment of the soon-to-be-completed fiscal year budget is something that you do every year, despite all of our best efforts to try to come up with a revenue and expenditure budget that rejects what will actually happen, there are variances that occur that are not anticipated during the course of the year. Rather than deal with those one at a time as they occur, we deal with it in one reconciliation ordinance at the end of the year, and so what this essentially does is it adjusts some line items up to account for the fact that there has been over expenditures, adjusts other line items down, because we haven't expended as much as we thought we were going to, and it all balances out, and it does, it all balances out. So there is no increased authorization for expenditures, it simply adjusts the line items so we can close out the year properly with a budget that matches the actual year-end expenditures.
Thank you. Entertained a motion and second to adopt and approve the ordinance amending the annual budget of the city of Streeter for fiscal year 2017, LaSalle and Livingston Counties, Illinois.
So moved.
Any other discussions? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item four.
Mayor, council, action and approval of a new budget is required before the start of the new fiscal year, for us that's January 1. You spend three budget sessions, study sessions, going over the budget, and it's summarized here in my cover memo. There's a decrease of about 8% in the general fund, that's not because we've cut services by that much, although we have made some reductions, the principal reason for that reduction is that this fiscal year, there's no expenditures running through the general fund for the city hall remodeling project. At the beginning of 2017, we still had about 10% of that project that was still to be done and run through the budget, and that happened in the first couple of months of '17, but that's already, that's due there, and that's not in the budget anymore. The non-general fund, as you can see here in the summary, more than a million and a half dollars higher than '17, what that simply reflects is mostly it's more capital projects in super fund and grant fund and a couple of other special categories, but the overall budget is still pretty close to what it was, a little over $26 million, last year, still $26.8 million this year. So no significant variances from what you had in your study session, so it's recommended that we adopt the budget at that level for '18.
Thank you. Entertained a motion and second to approve and adopt a budget for fiscal year 2018, January 1st through December 31st, 2018, for the city of Streeter, LaSalle, and Livingston Counties, Illinois.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Number five.
State statute requires that you adopt a meeting schedule for all the planned meetings before the beginning of the fiscal year, and that's been presented to you by the city clerk. I want to make one change to it, and that is, under number two, your study session is usually the second Tuesday of the month, but in January, you've decided to move that to the third Tuesday, so that'll be January 16. And I believe that Council Rosev indicated that the library board of trustees has made some changes to their meeting schedule that we didn't know about. What is that?
Instead of the third Monday, it's the third Tuesday next year, and I was just saying Monday night, they're coordinating 16.
So that'll change all 12 of those dates for the Streeter Library Board of Trustees. It's my recommendation that you approve the 2018 schedule with those amendments.
Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Number six.
Mayor, council, there are two TIP redevelopment agreements on your agenda tonight, and this is the first of them. This one is still not completely finalized, and so I need to take your direction as to whether or not you want to hold it over, or you want to authorize the mayor to sign it once, as long as it's substantially in the form that you have in here this evening. Let me walk through it, since I left it on your medias there this evening, it was not, there was an earlier version of it, I think that was distributed in the council package that went out on Saturday. Basically, what this redevelopment agreement says is that the developer is going to build a, he plans to build an 80-room hotel, although what the agreement says is 60, because it sets the floor at 60, has to be at least 60. I'll tell you that today his plan is 80, but the, but since the redevelopment agreement is a contract and sets the minimum, that's why it says 60. It provides that the incremental taxes coming from the project, that it will be in accordance with the intergovernmental agreement we have with all the other taxing bodies, it'll become a targeted project, so 100% of the TIP can be captured, and will be applied to the developer's costs after the city pays for any debt service it has on bonds issued to help pay in advance for improvements at North Point, and you've done that twice in late '16 and again in late '17. So there's also a provision that Ed Rosev mentioned to me that we wanted to delete, and what does that section, and it has to do with a business development district tax.
It's on page 6 of redevelopment proposal, number five, aye.
Five, five, a, aye.
Oh, a, aye.
Yeah, so that should be deleted. The other thing that you can see here that have to do with the timelines for when the project will start, it's anticipated that construction will start in September of 2018, and this agreement requires that it end no later than December 19. The total amount of increment that he could receive is up to $6 million. I don't think it will reach that point, because he can only get that amount, or whatever the actual increment is, whichever is less. So... The site of the hotel is immediately west, running in an east-west direction, immediately west of the First Federal Bank, isn't that the name of the bank, it's up there on Danny, and immediately south of Danny Drive, so, which is up near that section of the parking lot that did not get paved.
So the great south of the theater and parking lot.
Yes, yes, yeah, if you came straight out of the parking lot, straight south, you would hit the theater, right? But far enough away from the old Sabalot stores, so that when a tenant goes in there, there's plenty of parking in between the hotel and that store. So we're excited about it. Hilton True is a new line, when several years ago Hilton had a sort of, as their budget line, the Hampton line, that sort of has crept up in cost, and so this is a smaller room, a lesser heat cost, and a lesser per-room night. It's sort of like one step above a micro-tel, if you ever stayed at one of those, appeals to the business traveler, which is what our hotel study indicated would support that kind of activity in Streeter, and I don't think that it conflicts with the niche that we have already occupied by some of the other lodging establishments in town, so it's the Hilton Plus, and if you were to go online and Google Hilton True, T-R-U, not the E, just T-R-U, there's some visual pictures of other places, has a distinctive look to it, and so that's what the plan for Streeter. So I say again, it's your pleasure, whether or not you want to hold this over or allow the mayor to approve once all of these changes that we've discussed here are finalized. I know that the developer's anxious to get going, even though he's not going to begin construction, he'll start sooner than September, he's simply obligated to start by that time. It's the financing and other paperwork he's got to get started, and that's why we've been trying to move on this as quickly as possible.
What's your feelings?
I think it's essentially done except for the final language, so I'm all for it.
Karen, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
How should they phrase the motion, Cheryl?
Motion to approve the agreement.
Do you want to read how that motion should be?
It's in my right page here.
Okay.
I think the resolution would be to approve and authorize the TIP development agreement with North Point Holding Development LLC substantially in the form as presented at the council meeting of December 20, 2017.
Motion, motion is.
Clerk, second. Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item seven.
This one's different, too. You've already, you already know about the action by District 44 to enter into a purchase, sale agreement for the sale of Sherman School and the block to the east of it. What we discovered in the title process is that there's a distinct possibility that in 100 years since Fawcett Plum gave that property to the Township 31 School, that the alleys were never vacated. So we're not sure, but the title doesn't appear that they were ever vacated. He planted those lots in the same way they did all the other blocks out there for development and, and so that ended up giving into the school. So it is my request that the first thing that you do is entertain a motion to waive the requirements of City Council Policy 5E. City Council Policy 5E is the one that you adopted some time ago, establishing a process of public notification to all surrounding property owners when you vacate alleys. It just went through a BUD process where we did that, and I think the expectation is that we thought these alleys were vacated, I don't think it's necessary in this case. It's not required by law anyway, it's something that you adopted as a city council policy. So I'd like to request that you waive, have a separate motion waiving the public notice requirements of 5E, and then you can, and assuming that that's acceptable, then you can act on this vacation ordinance.
So would that mean number seven, or is that one that's not here?
It's all item seven.
All items seven.
It's just two different acts, two different motions that relate to item seven.
And this is not the first structure, we had this issue with the hospital, have the same problem.
Yes.
Okay, so you want to...
A motion suspending the public notice requirements of City Council Policy 5E.
Got that, Melissa?
No.
But she's got her tape.
Okay, alright. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussions? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
What you have now is an, should be an ordinance here. Where's the ordinance?
Just a central part, this is it?
It's supposed to be an ordinance, I don't see the ordinance. Do you have an ordinance in your packet? Okay. Hey, apparently just didn't get the ordinance in there. It is the standard boilerplate ordinance. You can see the plaque in the packet, and for the record, we have a formal request, both from the seller and the buyer. No, that's...
That's the other one.
That's the other one. So it is the standard ordinance, so my request is that you approve an ordinance vacating all of the alleys in blocks one and two of the Central Park addition of the city of Streeter.
There's a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Number eight.
So this next one is also a vacation, a right-of-way, however, this is not a right-of-way that was ever fully platted, okay? This was in a preliminary plaque, when many years ago the expectation was that Cross Street would continue north of Crack all the way to Gulf Road, okay? It was never, there was never a final plaque filed with the county actually dedicating it to the city of Streeter, which is the process for how you acquire the right-of-way, but it's on the plaque, and so it needs to be vacated, even that portion needs to be abandoned, and our claim to it relinquished as a part of Mr. Fieldman's development of this track. And that's what the ordinance does.
Entertained a motion, second to authorize a vacating of public city right-of-way for unimproved sections of Cross Street, city of Streeter, LaSalle County, Illinois.
Second.
Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Number nine.
I'm pleased to report that we passed the $15,000 mark in the fundraising for the lighting and landscaping of the Heritage Park Vintage mural, and it's recommended that we do the lighting separately, and we have a proposal from Feisig Electric here, which complies with the design that Feisig and Ray Fasika came up with. It's basically 12 light banks, LEDs, three on the north, three on the south, four tucked underneath the faux marquee, and then two on the very top, on those sort of pyramid-type light enclosures to light it all up, and it won't be done by Christmas, I'm sorry, but it should be done fairly quickly, because he's provided all the access panels, and I know the electrician wants to move on it quickly, so we have enough money to cover this in the NCI Artworks Fund that was established for this, they plan to continue fundraising to pay for the landscaping portion that would be, that would happen in the spring. In fact, even this portion is going to be in New Year's budget, we'll plan for it in New Year's budget, so if you approve it, it'll be charged to the '18 budget, so it's $13,170.
Entertained a motion, and second to authorize a bid for the installation of lighting in the Heritage Park Vintage mural wall.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Item 10.
Item 10 is the one that relates to the other TIP redevelopment agreement I have, we have before you, and this one is not a draft form, it is a final, and it's ready for your passage, and it has been signed by the developer. The developer is, the name of the company is Streeter 2 LLC, but this developer is putting in a strip mall with five stores, store areas, the largest of which will be a combined Dunkin' Donuts and Baskin Robbins, a store immediately north of the Kroger gas station, south of Monroe Park Road, and on the east side of Bloomington. Jim Porter is a partner of the developer, is here this evening to tell you what we already know, and that is how excited we all are about the project starting, and he plans to begin, I think in April, right?
Correct.
Let me mention a few things about the redevelopment agreement. It does not use any bond proceeds, this is, the developer will be paid back to the amount of his eligible costs, or the actual, or 50% of the actual increment, whichever is less. This one is a 50% rather than 100% because it's in TIP 2. The one we just did is in TIP 1, which provides for certain targeted parcels to be at 100%. The TIP 2 being an earlier TIP didn't have that provision in it, and so the city is only able to use 50% of the TIP proceeds for projects, and we're using all of what we have available to us. Alan Matani, who is Jim's partner, has indicated that this project wouldn't have penciled out without the TIP, so it's another example of a project that is happening because of some of the economic development incentives that you have in place. On page... Page three. Item four, you'll see that paragraph there has a slightly different type font. The developer plans to build about an 8,000-square-foot retail building. At the time that he actually begins construction, Jim, you correct me if I'm wrong, okay? Depending on how their efforts go to get tenants there, because right now, the only known tenant, secured tenant, is the Dunkin' Donuts-Baskin' Robbins shop. They may build the whole 8,000, or choose to build half of it now and half of it later, depending on the success between now and April of getting additional tenants.
Correct, that's correct.
So...
Scott is holding our feet to the fire, basically with the start-repletion dates on this project to complete the full 8,000 square feet, so...
Any other comments you'd like to make?
Only that we're very excited to come into the city, we're, we think it's a great location and a great opportunity for us, and we've already had some conversations about if this site is as successful as we hope it is, or maybe a possibility of a second site in town.
We've also discussed with, not now with Jim so much, but with Alan, if there's some way that the franchising office would allow it to happen, to give some special recognition to the fact that this is Bert Baskin's hometown, so...
Yeah, we were thinking of some sort of memorial wall or something on the store, so I think it's a nice idea, it's a good thing.
Thank you. Entertained a motion, second to authorize the TIP development agreement with Streeter 2 LLC for commercial construction on the street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussions? Clerk, call a roll, please.
Beady, aye. Rosev.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye.
Number 11.
Mayor Council, as you know, the IDOT administration of motor fuel taxes requires separate resolutions and authorizations for each and every one of your uses of MFT money. We use a portion of our MFT every year for salt and asphalt and coal mix and gravel that the Public Works Department uses in the maintenance of streets. Do you have any questions about how we're using that? Mary Haken, our Public Works Director, is here, anything you want to mention about what we're doing and how this number changes from year to year?
We bid out the oil and the stone for our spray patching, that goes up to contract each year, and so does our gravel, so we put that out, and we try to get the best price we can, and bids come back in, we turn it into IDOT, and it didn't have to be in a true contract. With our, this last year, we had a little change in our oil supplier, and it actually worked out pretty good, so we didn't have many clogs or problems with the equipment, so that went real well, and we did get a lot of streets paved, you know, spray paint, so... And now we're doing our pot holding right now with the coal patch, hopefully we have less this year, so...
Thank you. Entertained a motion, second to appropriate $133,850 in motor fuel tax funds in connection with maintenance... hundred and fifty dollars in motor fuel tax funds in connection with maintenance materials for fiscal year 2018, and maintenance of streets and highways by the City of Streeter under provision for the Illinois Highway Code.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call or roll please.
Beady, aye. Rosa.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. On consent agenda, I've entertained a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda with Councilman Scarborough abstaining from Section B, and Councilman Crouch abstaining from Section C.
So moved.
Your second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, call or roll please.
Beady, aye. Rosa.
Aye.
Crouch.
Aye.
Scarborough.
Aye.
Mayor Lansford.
Aye. City official comments? Chair will start with you.
Excuse me, I just wanted to welcome Baskin' Robbins, Pumpkin Brains, Sister Year, Streeter Two, and just send a thank you to NCI Artworks for their work on lighting that wall.
Councilman Rosa?
I'd also like to thank Dunkin' Donuts and our new motel, both of which wouldn't have been here without TIP funds. Early in the year, that was somewhat a controversial topic at the time, but I think it's proven to be doing what we intended it to do. And I want to thank Scott, who's put in a lot of extra hours getting these things done. You don't, you take all the brunt of criticism, but don't get appraised for what it's do, and I think in this case, it definitely is. Also, this agenda is very positive, I think, because it shows level real estate taxes once again this year. Start Committee's been actually getting the downtown moving again, I'd like to thank them, a couple members are here, they're doing that, all your work involved in that, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Again, I'd just like to thank the Baskin' Robbins Corporation, and the Hilton True, for giving, you know, taking the opportunity to come to Streeter and give this town a chance, things are moving in positive direction, and it's only going to get better.
Joe?
Firstly, I'd like to thank everyone for coming to the meeting. Secondly, I'd like to wish Merry Christmas to everyone here and citizens of Streeter and Acton here. And finally, if you do build a wall, is it Jim?
Jim.
Don't put it on the golf course, please.
You know, it's kind of hard to remember what we've been doing and everything, but this is not a full list of any shape or form, but it's some of the accomplishments that the council has completed this year with the help of, of course, with all of the employees and the citizens of Streeter. The Crafty Edition project was completed, sewer capacity upgrade was done, Eastwood was completed, Broadway from Bloomington to Adams was done, Lismar Storm Sewer was completed, splash pad has been put in, fire training facility on Tenth Street is just about ready to go. Eleven houses were demolished, Heritage Wall project, City Hall remodeling and grand opening, new police station, seven facade grants, nineteen applications processed for home loan grants. We sold five and a half acres just north of Crafty to Gensini Construction to keep their equipment here. Public Works Department installed LED lights on Benchmark Drive, Big R's open. We received a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar sewer grant for the Barlow addition, which is going to result in a fifty-five homes additionally being annexed into the city. Been construction on the Greenway Trail Extension. The Colrun Creek Sewer Project was initiated, road entrance for Lewiston Road into the IDI property is completed. Demolition of St. Francis Hall was done. Thirty-one million dollar Remodeling Center for Health Project was initiated. Dollar Tree construction on Oakley Avenue is started. SoCo remodeled and expanded their building on Chabana Street. Arch Gravel Lions Club completed the dog park. Streetlight programs have been initiated. Kate Tomboss Polka Polka First Annual Summer Music Festival has been initiated. North Point upgrades has been completed. Third annual Streeter Ag Days. The second annual Thrilla and Vanilla Black Race is completed. The Sherman School property, the elementary District Forty-four, sold to the Foreign Service Group Limited out of Hong Kong, and we, that will be ongoing for next year. The Park Board was created. Grants applied for 2018, the Riverside Flood Mitigation Grant through FEMA, Downtown Street Project ITIP, seventy-five thousand dollars grant applied for residential demolishing of properties. SUSPA Centennial is kicked off, so those are some of the things we will be working on next year, as well as the things that we approved here tonight. So I think it's been a pretty good year of the things that we've accomplished here in Streeter, and I think you're right, I think we are on the road, that going in the right direction, and it's a very charitable community, and I only wish everybody a Happy New Year's and a Merry Christmas. Nothing else, we stand adjourned. Motion, Twitter.